Oh.
Bird.
Here.
McGinn.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Foreman.
You're here.
Hipper.
Here.
Stecker.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda?
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes, Stevie. Motion to approve. Second, call roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Hipper.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions, other communications. A discuss communication center funding with Boone County Board of Supervisors. As you know, we've invited our county supervisor, Districts TV, to discuss the funding of the communication center. And this is the time if you have questions for them, maybe they have questions for us. We'll kind of open it up, see who wants to start out. Maybe we'll back up, Steve, just where we're at currently on this. Sure, we're all capable. As we discussed the last time, where we're at is the county's initial proposal came back to us after we talked some issues regarding some of our concerns for taxation issue and where some of my press secretary posed a methodology of how that would be worked and how that would be refunded by the cities through the county, what would alleviate some of those concerns at the end of the day. Forty thousand would have come to us.
Some of the funding options that they came up with, and then we had some input into that. We had a meeting with supervisor Kretzinger to make an offer. It ends up being we are about twenty seven thousand dollars apart. And that's with you giving the county or the city giving the county a twelve dollar for every resident. So twelve thousand, six hundred dollars, which brought the forty thousand down to twenty seven of some odd dollars in their condition proposal on there, I believe it's per capita, which is option C of what we talked about. The city went forward with option A, which is a special levy. There was no traction for that, at least from the county side. And so they made this offer, proposal for capita. And then we got to the funding center where we're at on your last meeting of supervisor Kretzinger, which brought it down to, with that credit down to twenty seven thousand some odd dollars. Supervisor Kretzinger, did I portray that correctly?
Very good.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so that's where we're at when we get to twenty seven, it's somewhat important. The board was particularly interested in going forward with that amount. So as we discussed the last time, we had consensus was to ask them to come here. Pretty wanted to ask questions, obviously. They've heard from Bill and me and Jim. So if you guys have any questions for us, we can do the time and place for that as it relates to what we discussed with funding. But as you know, we're at a very limited way to go here. There's just several options, either accept or... I think the question is, because I have time. I did this yesterday. My neighbors are out, there's four people sitting there. I'm going up and add, as taxpayers, I just want to ask you a question. I said, do you realize some of the funding, we pay thirty five percent of the communication center and our general fund, which is our taxpayers pay for that? I said, you know that some of the county pays their portion of the general fund as well? I think the question is, I mean, here's what I'd really love to do. I would love to have this as a question on the ballot, next question. And layout and let people know how things are being paid and where your dollars are actually coming from. What portion is paid out of the rural? What portion is paid out of the general fund? Because us, we here are here to represent people of the city. And then when they're getting double taxed, I think they have, I mean, we have a right to at least ask questions. I think that's what we're here to do tonight. And I look at not only the communication center, I look at how the sheriff's department is funded. A lot of it's funded, majority of it's funded out of the general fund. It seems like the rural fund doesn't get affected because I don't know why, if that is. Why it's easier to double tax the citizens of the community, of the cities, rather than the rural sites? So I think that is our, I don't know enough of that. Go ahead.
I think Mr. Kretzinger's proposal takes into account portions of the city. City five percent pays in, he's paying the credit on that. So that should be out of the...
Yeah?
Yeah, what Bill just said, this thing was put together, which felt here was part of the original agreement. As far as those, something that's, but they really had, I think they were really thinking, as you did, as you mentioned, the way it's laid out, sixty five percent of this is paid by the rural fund. They're out of the rural people, rural area, thirty five by the city, and then approximately ninety five hundred. This is the original, ninety five hundred by man, it was all. And the reason for the sixty five, thirty five differential, even though the city obviously uses more airtime, whatever, has more radios, more everything, was really to make that even between the fact that the people in the city of Boone were paying part of that through their taxes of the city, the county general fund, which charges everybody in the entire county. And if you do the math, as that turned out, it was pretty darn even how that worked out. You don't have to per capita, how do you look at that? And as you know, it worked very much against any kind of special taxable thing because that's just another layer of that onto our taxes. And this system has really worked quite well for quite some time. Just in the last few years or so, this became a real issue about things weren't fair. And more we get into this, I mean, what we've offered and what Mr. Kretzinger's come forward, my colleagues, I think is more than fair. I mean, if you do the math to that, you know, the city's gained roughly sixty thousand dollars, something in thereabouts, than you're going to pay less, we're going to pay a lot more. We're going to pick up the difference for Ogden, Maverick, those people, the differential in their original agreement because they were locked in at the ninety five hundred plus, whatever the increase was, throughout the year. And we're picking up those people that are now in the converted areas of town, which I realize that's kind of a responsibility of you, but it really technically is a part of either of us. It's just, and we're just trying to get this settled, so.
Yeah, but when you say sixty five percent of the rural, you can say rural, but you're paying, you're using your general fund to pay that, which means that the citizens of Boone are paying again.
That's based on the fact that basically the rural taxable value is roughly sixty five percent of the total of that general fund.
But they pay less taxes anyway.
No, they don't. This is taxable value.
Taxable value.
Taxable value, it's not assessed that, it's taxable value.
Yeah, I think what the mayor is referring to, and the council member said a copy of it, and it's the one that has at the top Communication Board 2080 agreement. If you look at the little chart down there that Andrea put together. I think what the mayor is referring to is the taxable value, you're right. But when you look at the taxes actually paid, he did an assessment on residential property for two hundred thousand. And you have a copy of this, Mr. Duffy, that was passed out at that meeting. So a residential property of two hundred thousand, a commercial property of two hundred thousand. And then, and Andrea took an example of fifty five point three five acres of land. That assessed value for that fifty five acres is seventy eight thousand, three ninety three, according to the numbers at the time. Commercial and the commercial property and residential of two hundred thousand. So when you apply the fiscal year twenty one rollbacks and the taxable valuation, and this is put together on this, shows that we had a special levy, okay? Which is what the city has asked for from the beginning. And that budget for the comm center, and I think we just threw in for the purposes of the numbers at the time, the emergency management budget as well, because the comm center budget's around seven sixty to eight hundred. We added two hundred thousand for the emergency management budget at the time we were talking about it. So we came in at a million. So if you did a special levy at a million, if you look on the end of that, where it has tax increase, the residential property of two hundred thousand dollars, which is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, that's what it's valued at, that's what you can sell it at, is sixty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. The commercial property assessed at two hundred thousand is what you could sell it at, maybe a ten or twenty percent. Either way, fair, is a hundred and eleven dollars and sixty cents on that special levy. If you look at the fifty five point three five acres of land assessed at seventy eight thousand, three ninety three, that's what's assessed at, they would pay thirty nine dollars and sixty cents, which is less than half of what the others would for those values. And I think we all can agree that sixty, fifty five point three five acres of land is going to sell for considerably more than the two hundred thousand of what it's valued. So that's what he's referring to when he makes that statement, Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, part of that, I mean, that's a legislature, you know, hard line, the way the rollbacks go.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no arguing with that, it's just the numbers are the numbers.
If we go to a special levy, okay, here's my thing.
And I can also address the issue of the special levy. My name is Matt Skir, I'm the county supervisor for Boone County. I would be legal advice to the board supervisor in support of county. It would be my advice that if they cannot fund the communication center with a special levy, I think that would be illegal. I think you're stretching emergency management too far. Maybe Jim has commented on this, maybe he has not. There are only specific reasons for which the county can use a supplemental levy. One of those reasons is emergency management. Emergency management is a different entity. Now, what the city has proposed and talked about with supplemental or special levy is that the comm center budget be entirely funded through emergency management. I am of the opinion that you cannot do that. And I've been working with Jim and Bill some, and they gave me the names, sort of two people, of counties that they're suggesting do fund their counties in this way. The three names they gave me were Clinton County, Johnson County, and Scott County. I did confirm that Johnson County and Scott County fund their communication center through emergency management, but the county does not, and their emergency manager without the opinion that that cannot be done. And as I think about this, I can give a simple example. Emergency management, the purpose of it is for us to be able to respond in emergencies. And part of that does require communication. To extend the entire communication budget that far would mean that you're using emergency management and special levy to respond to simple calls like unlocking a parking lot. It's clearly not an emergency. So the special levy is off the table for probably a couple of reasons. Number one, would be my opinion, you cannot do it legally. And number two, that would be up to this board whether they could even want. So I think when you have these discussions, you all talk about wanting how much. But I think it's important to really distinguish when you talk about the communication center, you are not talking about emergency management, because you cannot fund the entirety of this communication center budget with a special levy.
So as legal advisors, the city, Matt and I disagree a hundred percent on this. I think it can be funded by a special levy. It is funded by a special levy in various counties. It's that the board supervisors doesn't want to impose a special levy. Whereas City of Ogden, City of Maverick, Boone County Hospital, City of Boone, all endorse the imposition of a special levy. So Matt, I disagree with you. I think that is certainly an option. It's maybe not an option here because of the lack of consideration of that by the board of supervisors. But I think the initial issue started was whether or not the board, the communication board, could impose a special levy without consent of the supervisor. And again, we have a difference of opinion about that. But from the county's perspective, the city's Boone is paying in thirty five percent. County pays in sixty five percent, none of it out of the rural fund. So out of that sixty five percent, the city of Boone pays twenty five percent of that. So that's where the double taxation comes into play. So Eric, I appreciate the hard work he put into this, but he came up with a forty five thousand dollar figure that came out of the rural fund. I don't know what the rationale for picking that as opposed to a hundred thousand or ten thousand. I don't know what that is. But the city's perspective is if we impose a special levy, it would be about two hundred thousand dollars per year cost to the citizens of Boone. Whereas our current cost is about four hundred thousand dollars. That's why we tried to leave in the middle at three hundred thousand dollars and have some rationale for where we think all fairness would be is if we imposed a special levy or all that comes out of the county general fund, which clearly the county supervisors can do. And that would be at the two hundred thousand dollar level for the city of Boone. So those are the differences. And I think that's, that's why we were dead set in the middle. And I don't know what Eric's rationale is for the twenty five thousand dollars, but I'm pointing at from the city's perspective. That's how we came up with the differences we had.
The forty five thousand dollars is somewhat working back into a number allows us to complete the per capita goal that was set at the beginning. To come up with a per capita, sometimes you have to find the number that makes it work. And forty five thousand directly from rural fund makes it work by the time we get credit back for general fund levy that goes to the taxpayers of Boone. The actual net reduction is about sixty, sixty one thousand dollars a year over what the city of Boone resident taxpayers currently would be paying for the communication center.
So if I could just take that step further from what Supervisor Kretzinger said, on, for the elected officials here at the city, if you look at the email that's on your desk, it's in yellow. That is a simplified way of explaining how we're trying to do this funding. And I've had this conversation with Supervisor Kretzinger. If you look at that, so Jim mentioned that a special levy for the city would be around two hundred thousand. Actually, what we calculated is a hundred and eighty eight thousand, six hundred and forty, using the calculations of forty five, two seventy four. So I took that, or staff took that, and from what, from what we're paying now and what we would pay, as Jim alluded to, and the difference of that is two hundred and one thousand. So what we came up with, if that's the case, if it's, the difference is two hundred, one thousand, let's split that fifty, fifty. So that's what we proposed. And splitting that then would be a hundred more for the county, basically. However, they are committed sixty thousand, six ninety three. So we obviously took that into account for that hundred thousand. So where the difference then is forty, so we're a difference of forty thousand. Is everybody with me now? Everybody good? Okay. So Eric, or excuse me, the councilman Ray met with Supervisor Kretzinger and offered a credit to the city of one dollar per person of twelve thousand dollars and some odd dollars that would come off that forty thousand. And then that's what, if I, you took that. All right, okay. So that's where we come up with the twenty seven thousand. So from the city standpoint and about, or Supervisor Duffy mentioned about fairness, that's the difference, not doing the special levy, but the special levy cost and what we're paying now, there's a difference, there's a two hundred thousand, let's split that. You're already there at sixty, so we tried to go to the forty, and then Stephen made that request. So that knocked it down to twenty seven. So I think the city has come forward tremendously on this because, one, from what my directive from city council when this started was special levy. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so that was my directive. So then we came off that and dropped that, lack of a better word, we'll just call it a request, dropped that and went with the per capita that Supervisor Kretzinger came up with. So then we just looked at the money on the difference and tried to, you know, meet the county halfway and split it halfway. That's how we got to where we are today. That's where we are at the difference of twenty seven thousand dollars. That's what we discussed in the close session that we had, and then with your request to ask the supervisors. Any, if I say something incorrectly, please let me know. Supervisor Kretzinger, are you, is that accurately reflected?
I think you're a hundred percent accurate. I got into this definitely depression among everybody in the room. And this has been going on for two years. That's why I guess I was dumb enough to step into the middle of it. But I've seen good movement on both sides. And you're right, we're coming together, but we're not there. And I don't know how necessarily to bridge that, or if we can. I don't know.
And I will say this from staff perspective and with Jim, that with him doing that got us this far. I don't think we would have been without Supervisor Kretzinger's help. So that's basically now, any questions you have, please. But that's where we got to where we are this evening.
I think another concern that we had, and I want to ask the three supervisors, is did the county, because I never did, I never did hear myself, did the county, was the county ever able to verify that the funds that Maverick and Ogden have been putting in over these years did go into the comm center budget?
Yes.
If, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm very, very much.
Okay.
I can, I look in that extensively, and I'm satisfied with the numbers that were presented. There's absolutely no way to match dollar for dollar of it's within the law. They did take it to a feeling, and part of the confusion was by the county auditor who said, hey, I put that money in the county general fund. Well, the this vote or whatever, once we dug in and the current county auditor provided a great deal of financial information, I've been with Matt a couple of times. And I'm satisfied on the cities and every participant in that 2080 that the contributions were fairly equal.
Yes, you know, I can speak to why I'm opposed to the special levy. Special levy in my mind keeps taxing according to a group about authorization from the elected officials, the county people elected to make sure their taxes are in the right place. I mean, I assume that's kind of why we're here tonight, because you're concerned about your money. Well, we'd be concerned about our money. And so if the board, the communications board, good or bad, I really have a problem turning over the taxing authority then. And, you know, there's a lot of things we can consider. I think this whole thing has shown its benefits, both the city and all the cities and the county to have a joint communication center, you know, Bill Skerr and the freaking sheriff got together. We've saved a lot of time doing this, but, you know, we're down, right now, we're down to separating salaries and benefits. How it all starts out, there's, there's a lot more to it than salaries and benefits. Bill mentioned some things, maybe on their side, I mean, there's no, there's utilities for the building, the equipment, there's HR costs, there's building repairs, there's insurance. None of that's taken into account, the county's picking up, you know, and so.
Yeah, but it's, it's not out of the county general fund.
They can go out and make up, you know, adding things to the pile. But I think, you know, stopping at salaries and benefits, we know it's a benefit of both. Because if you guys had to go out and contract that service, I'm sure it would cost you a lot more. And we know if we had to do that, but if we were to change positions and you guys had to run the thing and we pay a percentage, in my mind, I think that'd be a better deal. Because we know part of this is staff, the communication center, and all these things I listed there, there's costs there. And so I think you're getting a fair deal.
I think we can appreciate the taxation without representation. If you have a 2080 that specifically makes the board a elected representative in each political subdivision, I think that having it was covered. And if they, if they alone are agreeing on that large person, I still think that's covered.
I guess I disagree with you.
Yeah.
The county elected officials and folks like that, it's just...
Yes.
I just have two more comments. One, you know, we keep talking as out of the general fund, the county general fund. But just keep in mind, still, matter of when, I've talked to a couple auditors about this, sixty five percent of the money comes from rural fund. So if something's paid for a hundred dollars and it's sixty, basically sixty five percent, or sixty five dollars that's coming out of the rural, you know, that's not true.
And that's the rural fund, you're paying it out of the county general fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, general fund.
That twenty five percent we're paying.
General fund, sixty five percent is being paid out of the rural piece. No, it's not true. Well, it's quite true. It's not. There's absolutely no way that's true, Steve. The sixty five percent is paid out of the county general fund, which all of the communities in Boone contribute to. The city of Boone contributes twenty five percent. Going back to that, going back again, though, this tax source is for, whether it's in the city or county, the tax source and the taxable dollars, the levy rate that's applied. And the taxable value out in the rural area is sixty five percent of the total. That's, I've been told that by two auditors, Phil Meyer.
But you're still not figuring the rollback, which is outside your control, just like it's outside of our control. But the state legislature rollbacks impacting that taxable value?
Yes.
Just because it's valued at that.
That's an argument.
But there's still pain.
I've been told by Phil Meyer and another auditor, that's how it works, that I would hope to pay now. The second thing is, having to do again with the, the special levy. I just, you know, I've lived in Boone all my life, and I know some of you have.
I have as well.
And I think we all care for elected officials, we wouldn't do this because they care about the people, right? Because it's, I know I said you want his job, but I'm sure you agree. But I mean, I ran for this office, I think Boone better, and I know you have too. But I've seen what, what happens with special levies. And I don't want to, I don't want to do this to the taxpayers of this county or the city of Boone. Because these things start out nice and innocent, and all of a sudden, I mean, I look at some of them that are in there right now. I mean, these things just blow up, and we don't need more taxes in the county or the city. And I, I think this has been ran quite efficiently for all these years. No problems until all of a sudden this came up. And I don't know why we want to spend more money on the same thing, because that's what's going to happen during time. I've seen it happen in communications, as far as the 911 board. We went through county, yes, we're paying that out of the general fund. The county just did a bullet for a couple million dollars with radio improvements for the, for the new communication system, which we now have, the state yard communication system in county. But there's nothing coming out of the city budget, nothing. Correctly, all their payment, anybody in the town paying on that is coming out of the county general fund. So, you know, we're a part of that.
We are paying.
You know, pay half of it, or proportion to things, plus you have a lot more. Cornstalks don't make 911 calls, you know, I mean, do you see each other?
Well, okay, so let's use the argument for example on the 911 calls. The city budget, our city taxpayers are literally subsidizing rural people for emergency services for fire and ambulance at this point.
Probably.
We have extended our services to cover those because the services are required. I mean, if someone calls for Bridgeport needs an ambulance, and they're called, it's our firefighters going out to roll that. If it's a fire call, the fire townships don't subsidize anything near what it costs for a full time fire department. But our city taxpayers are subsidizing it so that person in Bridgeport can have a fire engine show up.
Right. But it's like Boone, I mean, City of Boone, Maverick, Ogden, everybody, the county, rural area, it's, it's all one effort here.
I agree.
You're picking it back and forth, and that's what's going on here, we're just picking it back and forth.
I think, I really think the question is this, I, I respect what you do. Everybody that's in the light, I do, and then you take the good and the bad. But I'm going to use a perfect example, your sheriff's office, but you're paying nine deputies out of your general fund at the county, which we're paying for, part of it, twenty five percent. I'm already paying for eighteen police officers. Our taxpayers are already paying for that.
Yeah, look at the code of Iowa, unfortunately, it's an old code, but it says that the law enforcement is for, from the county, is the county sheriff. And if you choose to have additional representation of public protection, cities are allowed to have their own police department, that's what it says in there.
Well, yeah, but which, we're down to thirteen thousand people, of course.
No, not now, but I mean, it's just the way it is.
I think we're getting off track again, you know, we talked about coming to the Texas center. We didn't have the sheriff's business, and like I said, there's most of the things I can bring up on the other side. We don't want to be a tit for tat.
I just want the taxpayers to know who's paying what and where it's from.
We've found, heard a forty thousand, imagine a fight. You know, there's, we've gone, most of that is, most of that is the benefit of the city.
Um, how did you fund the herd?
General fund.
Out of the general fund.
So we are paying, so we're...
So, yeah, I think I would be suspected.
We're paying five thousand plus twenty five percent.
Seventy five percent of the herd rights in the city of Boone.
Which generates the local option sales tax provided to the county, which uses that levy for the rural road network. Secondary ways.
Anyway, there's, there's different sides of multiple...
Anyway, there's, there's different sides and multiple things, but I think we're going to get off track.
I think one of the questions, I think one of the questions that I have for the supervisors, I guess at this point would be, I don't know how the council's going to choose, so, you know, if they want to continue to bargain more for that twenty-seven thousand or if they want to seek litigation, if they want to press the levy issue. But let's just say hypothetically that we all said, sure, let's go ahead with Eric's model. Will the county assure this council? And I'm, we're not going to have any more years where, oh, great, you're going to have a little more money. All that stuff that you dealt with over the last few years is a bunch of garbage. And all that hurts is our chief trying to get money out of his budget to pay me up for things that are being done over there. Will this alleviate all that? Will that just all go away? See? So it really is not fixing the issue.
I think it would fix it enough. We have a formula going forward to go on to base. I mean, we can go under agreement where we have to go through these calculations, but at least we have a calculation we can rely on that we are separate kind of trying to.
What I want, what I want at the end of the day is I want a budget, do it, it's approved July to June thirtieth. That's it. Right? No more coming from the city. And then other things over there, that's.
I think that's what we'd like to see too, but the twenty-eight degree agreement, you know, we have to give the provision of all and wrap that. Because what, we have a short call then, you know, there, there has to be a provision for a short call, just like there was before.
Well, yeah.
So are you, I'm sorry, just, sorry, can be sure, because this is also new, it's a territory for me. But are you saying that if there is a short call, we need to spend more, that that has to come a hundred percent from the county in order to be satisfied with that? I'm not sure that.
If the short, if the short call's sixty thousand, what are you going to assess to a hundred and fifty? You guys are already picking up most of their costs.
They pay, they don't pay you the real percentage increase of the initial amount. You didn't, their numbers, that's all they do at the time. And it's based on the percentage of whatever the increase is. I mean, we know for a fact there's going to be an increase in the budget. I mean, it's going to be a department that doesn't, you know.
I, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue you're talking about is, we set the budget, we put an increase in the budget, that budget gets blown, and then there's another four to six increase, percent increase. And then, then it comes back and says, well, we need more.
We're, we're having, the sheriff's here now, but we're having a terrible time keeping expectations. You know, this has been an ongoing battle. That's why I say, you know, if you guys want to take over, we'll take you percent, because this has been, it's been hard. So we all know what the labor market's going to be, you know, how many expectations we're going to need based on usage. There's, it's not a, a set stone kind of thing. We can, that's what the twenty-eight degree agreement is for, there was provisions in there, it's something that went over. We certainly didn't verge, you know, expenses to go over budget, that there was issues. It's, it's not easy keeping expectations. We're still, we're struggling with very many key factors. And paying it up because the wages are going up. Um, we have to deal with all those things, Stephen. I think Stephen, you know, and meetings, you know, not a lot of expectation for the total, but I don't know, we're trying to do the best. But I think you, you mentioned about having timely meetings, so we get ahead of this stuff instead of following, you know, three months after the happen. And I think your ideas are brilliant, and I think you need to thought that, get it planned, the words. Be a budget, budget pretty well figured out, comes to everything, but it becomes reality. You can do that in county.
We all get very selfish about our own budgets. That's something we can't, we can't, uh.
But no.
impart ourselves.
We're not getting the job, but we don't.
Right. But I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, there's many times we've put the chief under a lot of stress for having to come up with money that, you know, I've ran, I've ran state centers, a lot of people. I know what, I know what it takes. And your biggest thing when you're short on help is your, your overtime. Your overtime is going to hurt you. And just things that come up that you're not quite aware of from here to you. Opportunities that might come up, you know, just things like that. But, uh, there's more to running a comm center than just the people too. You've got your utilities and all that stuff, which, you know, we've talked about that, that's paid for by the county, and I get that. But everybody else through our, our taxation and, and general fund, they're, they're putting into that too, city board, so. Anyways, that was just my hypothetical throwout. I, you know, that, that's my biggest concern. Because I get very frustrated in the last few years when we're finding out that we owe this, owe that. It's just.
Maybe we should just put in a cushion to start with, you know, fund it a hundred and five percent. Put it up and we got a five percent cushion. I don't know what's the best way to handle that. That would have to be handled with 28e. I agree, that's not a good thing to have to expect all year.
Well, I agree with Stephen. I, like Eric, I'm a rookie here. But when I blow my budget, I don't go to somebody else to fix. I fix it. So what good is a budget if you're not going to stick to it? And I know stuff comes up, mercy stuff comes up, but we don't build in cushions. We build in what it takes and we try to stick to it. And our staff does an excellent job of staying within their budget. They do whatever they have to do, and we've come up with short calls before, but we've never gone to the well to get it. So this constant, from what I've been told the last two or three years of you guys going over your budget and coming back to us for more money, that money doesn't magically appear. We have to pull that somewhere. So I'm just saying, what good is a budget if you're not going to stick to it? And so I guess that's just how I feel about it. And I also agree with the mayor too. I, you guys haven't really addressed the fact that we're being double taxed here in the city.
Eric's formula, they said it will happen.
Hundred percent. It gets us to a per capita share. So that would be, that was the goal and it's accomplished at that place. But, I mean, and it's understandable you would like to have us be more.
Well, yeah, that's, that's your, yeah, that's your goal. You as a.
Yes, correct.
A, a body have decided for capita is.
Fair.
Fair. This council has decided that a special levy is spared. So whether it be a special levy or all of it come out of the general fund, which will be tax-wise similar to a special levy. That's what this body thinks is fair. This body met you more than fifty percent of the way, and you refused to come that little extra distance. And you rely on the forty-five thousand dollars that you said you had to pick and help. I've told you what our rational, rationalness for what we're at. So we've came over fifty percent and refused to come that extra one distance to put this all behind us. So we continue to make improvements in the communication center. Because of 28e and regrafted, makes some improvements, it makes it really better. It takes away these budget problems, because in the past, the budget was kind of willy-nilly and they would overspend and we'd get a bill for it. Money or the budget didn't go over, we still got that extra bill at the end of the year. Nobody's explained that to me yet, but those are kind of things with the regrafted 28e that, that. The times we looked at when this money went over, you also give it credit, hopefully not. Well, I understand that. I'm talking about the year where we were assessed an additional ten, fifteen thousand dollars because supposedly the communication center went over budget, when in fact you look at the figures and they did not go over budget. They underspent that year. So I don't know why we got to do that. Your former county auditor can't explain that, but I think the current county auditor will be much better for everybody to work with, and we can figure out those budget problems so that you should never overspend. Like it's just going to happen by communication. And if you go over budget, then they have to figure out, communication will have to figure out how, how you're special.
Jim, if you could, give me those numbers. You and I have talked, so this is a surprise to me. I would like to hear where you can identify that it went over. We can meet and meet with the auditor, because I mean, you're accusing us of, of taking money and not accounting for it.
I'm not accusing you of anything, Matt. I'm not saying you took the money. I'm saying these accounting issues, I'm saying that in the new 28e, if we would adopt, I think we take care of a lot of these budget problems. I think the new auditor takes care of a lot of these problems. But in all of our discussions, nobody explained to me why in the year we got billed extra and actually the budget came in under.
And I'd like to see that. In the, in the. We've gone over it, Jim. I'm not trying to start an argument with you. If there's a short call that you want to account for, but you've already said it's fine.
No, no, I'm not saying.
Has been working with both of us to provide all the documentation. And it's one of those things that goes without saying, the auditor has been doing budgeting for comm center, right? That's, that's another cost. But I would, I would like to see that and we can figure out where, if in fact, there's money that's unaccounted.
No, no, I, I, I'm not saying the difference in money that's paid in, I'm not saying that's a significant amount. I'm just saying how the budget was handled in that year has not been explained. But I don't think those problems will continue.
Correct.
Specifically, why were we billed extra in a year when the budget was not overspending?
I wasn't aware that happened, so I was like.
It's, it's, if you, I sent you this, the chart that I put together.
Correct.
So if you look at fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, it shows the extra eleven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollar payment that was made on October tenth. So don't get, I'm not saying we need credit or the county owes us money. I'm satisfied after going through all of those calculations with you and Diane's help. I think the city could treat it term as far as the contributions that we made. And we have gotten refunds, and we have gotten billed extras, but as far as what we were supposed to pay, I think it's real close.
So trying to put this all in the big picture, I guess, moving forward and maybe as the council decides how they want to go here. One thing I want to bring up that I think is important for people to understand is that initially communication board, majority of the members were. That's both of us, except, except for the county's representative office. And that with this new formula that Eric created, um, I will tell you as a board member, I think that the ability to try and do things near the board has become more difficult because the county in their methodology on this is covering basically what Mander and Ogden is paying. And so, uh, not that I, uh, find any fault with Mander and Ogden, looking at that going, well, that's a pretty good deal for us. That kind of helps them back off that issue. So then it really comes down to city Boone and how the county receives this. Because the other two, they're not losing anything. In fact, they're probably being, it's a good deal for them. And I don't blame them. They're small communities, they can't come over here. But it's important for the council to see how this had gone from a majority of the board leaning in this direction toward wanting a levy and pushing for that, to now, I think unfortunately for us, that has, that has went away. Because of what has now been proposed. There says with y'all. From what you've seen. We, yes.
Stephen?
Yeah.
Can I just add on that? Uh, Mander and Ogden, I read the, read the articles in the paper about this, it's called transpire. And just looking at that article, Ogden and Mander, they just made an approval, actually.
Right.
And they found the opposite, it didn't come aboard, it was, it gave them somewhat of a big helping, affordable rate, which was something ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And then they also agreed that in that 28e, they would pay their share of that initial amount would go up by percent, whatever that percent of that was. Or, no, you're, the way you present it's fine, it's just that I know that was their condition, still is. Because if you, if you do a levy, I mean, their, their rates can go up thirty, forty thousand a year compared to their tech revenue. And I, that's why I question now, if they still support that, you know, surely they, I know originally they, they did. Yeah. The question whether they do that.
I, I, I don't think they do. I, I, I think it is a good deal to those states, what's being proposed, you know? Um, and, and beyond that, there's nothing that precludes in Iowa code that the county or the sheriff could also say, you know, the original one was you're saying they weren't going to contribute. The county or the sheriff could have said, but we're not providing dispatch services either. They would have been really stuck, because there's nothing that forces the county to do that for them. I just wanted to point that out. Any other questions? You guys, do you have any questions for us? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for the light and stuff.
That's it. Thank you, guys. Thank you, please.
Number, uh, four, for standing committees, Austin Administration DJ.
Go to work.
Public Safety Stephen. Yes. Application for adoption street letter removal. From one of the area, this is for, this way of remembering.
Yes, sir.
Um, when the, I think everybody should have got a map of it. Certainly, so you should do that unless staff does.
That's awesome. Thank you.
JR's running around.
The only thing I can mention is, we can assign some idle business industries. Right now they're locked down, we're not making anything, so we will get this. Uh, we tried to open the DOT and they get their signs made.
Yes, as well, so they delay on.
Yeah, they're really backed up.
Lord, may I make a motion to go ahead and approve that application? Hold on.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Check off?
Yes.
Stuffer? Yes, right?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hey, next up, we have utility committee, Stephen. Um, we're going to have a utility meeting Wednesday, ninth, four thirty. Several items on the table.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot.
Bill, you still need that? Please, why?
Yes. The Economic Development Committee, Grant.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Um, on your desks are copies of some emails that have gone back and forth between myself, CDB and the chamber. So as you all remember, last week, or not last week, last meeting on May seventeenth, we had a discussion moving forward on the contract with the new CDB organization. And we also had a conversation on funding. And if you remember also, we approved third and fourth quarter fundings that we had held back in the chamber during this process. And we withheld approving fiscal year moving forward, until they got a contract with us signed and everything else. On Wednesday, the twentieth, I sent an email to board of organizations, and believe me, this is the last thing I wanted to do, asking for myself, city administrator, scare to have a joint meeting here between reps of the boards to figure this stuff out, because this has been one of the ones. The reason for that is two-fold. One reason is, it was obvious to me from the meeting on the seventeenth that they were no closer to resolving this issue. Second issue, and that became known to me, is that when the CDB organization got with Andrea and worked on our contract and moving forward with fiscal years three and four, around quarters, she found a piece of missing paperwork that needed to be filed with the government. So we could not, under our policy, approve moving forward with giving them any financing until that is figured out. I told her, under my position as the chair of the committee, to hold that funding until we can figure this out. CDB organization came to us and said, when we're on it, it's us, they expedited it, they sent it to DC, they're getting it done, they're getting it fixed. But until that time, they have hardly not received any funds from us. So that's the second thing. We are hitting six months of both organizations on any providers in different aspects of it. The reason I'm bringing that up in this format and the emails you have in front of you is, is the responses from both organizations on the option to mediate and figure this stuff out. Now, what I'm proposing is not taking lightly, but at this point, I am out of options as Chair of the EDP Committee. And this is my proposal is, is until this can be resolved and services can be provided by both organizations, neither organization will receive city funding or assistance in the power of or income contributions. Now, I want to be clear, this is big. We're talking everything from additional events downtown to Puffer, to marketing, state fair, our marketing campaign, our TV campaign has been on hold. But at this point, neither organization is willing to work with us to resolve this, so they can certify the services to city. I'm asking for both organizations to be all under this. I'm asking for a vote on the twenty-first, not tonight. But I wanted to bring it forward to counsel for ideas. This is the question.
What was the line? We discussed this at the end of the meeting, right?
Yes.
Seven, seven, one. Services are working. Now, I understand I wasn't told anything, but I should say, how much longer? Both guys are better, I mean, the week, look worse than me.
First of all, Stephen, I'm happy to answer your question, but, Greg, I'm curious, stating that this has been six months that the city is not receiving services from both entities. What cheaper services do you feel the city is not receiving?
I would say marketing with our business community and as well as CDB operations, which until this time has still not been separated. So the CDB operations are sort of in the Chamber Congress, correct?
Although.
So CDB operations.
County voted to withhold the funding, so withholding the funding, yes.
All right.
Withholding CDB funding for return, not receiving those services.
The letter we received from the chamber. I had a letter here, February twenty-fourth, Wednesday, from the Boone County Chamber Congress Board of Directors stating the separation of duties of the board, which is CDB and the chamber. Correct? Two separate organizations. Correct? We are June seventh.
So, so your, your issues are with the CDB?
My issue is with the Chamber of Commerce and the CDB. The Chamber of Commerce is not providing services. We have a survey that has gone out through our eight A and ZDC contract. There's a business owner that says the Chamber of Commerce has understepped over three years. The marketing campaign, the last Instagram post by the Chamber of Commerce and CDB was August of twenty twenty. The Twitter last post was March second of twenty-one. The last public solo chamber event was March fourth, put on by the Chamber and its members. The only members only event.
Except for the old classic last one.
Which was only for members of the chamber, not a public event.
That's not true.
All it says on the website.
So you're, you're going to some more systemic, long-term issues?
Yeah, not directly, they didn't pass between the negotiations with CDB and Chamber President. I am saying that we have been told repeatedly over the months, since we received notification of this, that this was happening and we were getting to a finalizing this.
Why can't anybody else just say it? What's, what's the problem? I thought this part of your stuff was done. Like you said, still like the weekend. I love yours. Okay, good. You want to turn, you want to turn this stuff, they can figure it out and move on. What's the problem?
So, you know.
Just, that's it? Is that simple? What's the problem?
They, we, when I approached council in March and said we have negotiated the terms, we are all in agreement. We moved forward with those terms and that agreement. In the meantime, the Director of the Chamber left.
Right.
And based on that, I asked the CDB for a few weeks, so we could get through that and figure out where we were. They came to the table, we were brown. We had the agreement, we met in May for both groups to meet again. In the meantime, they went back and wrote an agreement with the original terms. They, they backtrack every negotiation that we had made. We never even looked at that agreement. We discussed the terms of the agreement that the Chamber had written. Mark and his group, mine is Chris, sat there, read the agreement. We actually went back from five years of withholding their one-third down to two years. That's the only reason that the agreement needed to go back to the attorneys for signing. We changed from five years to two years and handed it to Mark. And Chris didn't like it and said, we're not signing this. And that happened at five o'clock before the last council meeting. And now the attorneys are.
What's up? Yeah, I'm, I'm on the executive committee as well, Councilwoman Stecker. I just want to give a couple of points to help explain what's going on, because this is obviously going on since January. It's been a long, difficult thing. The first point to make is that this is not a mutual split. I know it's been presented that we both agreed that this, this was done because we discovered that there was work being done by the committee members of this advisory committee to start enforcing a split to happen in the future, which was part of the reason for the staff change at the chamber in January, when, under, under which circumstances we discovered that there was all of this work happening to force this split essentially. So this was never our initiative as the chamber. We didn't want this. We didn't approach them with this. They essentially approached us and said, we want to leave, we're splitting, and we want all of our money and we want all of these things. They gave us more or less a list of demands, to which we replied, we'll consider it and we'll see what we see, what we think is fair. At that point, that was the February letters. We felt we could cause some type of. Obviously, every time we felt that, as Councilwoman Stecker mentioned, we feel like we're making progress and then we get handed back the original agreement, which means everything. We have talked with our legal counsel. There is no legal requirement for us to deliver any of that past funding. It can't be used for anything other than tourism or promotional efforts, but we do not have to give that. There's nothing we have to give to this organization as a new startup nonprofit. And so this, this agreement is really more of what are we willing to give them as a measure of good faith and encouragement for the tourist efforts? But this is not something we have to do. Legally, we are not required to do it. And so we are still in an, at an impasse, because we are trying to make what we feel is generous offer, but something we don't have to do. We're continually approached back with a, give us everything, we want everything. That's where it's at right now. And then we're looking at it as a message to the chamber. We're still, and, and part of my, going back to this not being a mutual split, we don't have confidence in the business model that was given to us at our first meeting back in February. The budget we saw did not give us confidence that in five years, whether or not this organization would take off. The budgets we saw were break even at best, independent on numbers that we had questions about and didn't have answers that we felt good about. That's why we withheld one third of the funds. We want to be prepared in case something happened. If this model didn't work out, we can pick up those responsibilities and make sure it happens. Now, I am disappointed that nothing's happened, but I do know that we have been trying to make this agreement happen, but on the terms that we want it to happen. Because again, this is an offer, not a requirement on our path, on our path. The impasse is that they are not willing to accept our offer and want more. And that's where we quite frankly don't have to and don't want to go too far on that one. That's why we're not willing nice, to be honest with you. We, I want this to be over with, because I'm a volunteer and I don't have the time for this. I don't have the emotional capital to be invested in this. At the same time, I have a responsibility to the Chamber Board in which I serve. And I want to make sure that the chamber, which is my responsibility, is taken care of and that we're, we're functioning going forward, not just this year, but for the next five years.
And. So to answer, so to answer, council, again, this question, it's one.
I, I will be.
A roundabout way of getting there, but that's what it's about.
Yes. It is the funding. And when I talked to the Chamber of Legal Counsel after I sent the email to the CF, the CDB and Councilmember Stecker, who's Chamber President, CDB got back an email to me, Chamber had their word of honor. And when I talked to their legal attorney, I made it perfectly clear to him, the city, in my position as ED, I do not care and want that fight over the phone. That is not an issue with me. The issue with me is that the services the city has contracted the Chamber for in the past and the CDB are not being fulfilled. And the resources to us do that are being held up in this negotiation. I'm talking social media, I'm talking the state fair boards, I'm talking about the ability to communicate and market our community that we are not able to do at this point. I'm not asking for the money. I'm not taking a side in the funding. I'm talking about the state fair boards, the website, the Instagram. I'm talking about the ability to market our community like it's supposed to be developed.
And I appreciate you, your volunteering for this. I know it's a high paid position, but, when you said, we're trying to do what in, what's in the best interest of the chamber, what in, what is in the best interest of the chamber should be what is in the best interest of the boom, of the chain. That's perspective that you need to look at. Because the longer this goes on, the more damage is done to boom, because nothing's happening, because that funding, you don't know what's going to happen with that funding. You're right, you may not have that requirement, but since that money was designated to that, it only stands to reason that part of that money should go to CDB if you're going to work with them in partnership. I, that's just my opinion.
Which, which is the offer that has been made, is that we would give them a large portion of the money. The problem, I know that it continues to get portrayed that the chamber is the reason this is held up. We have made this offer since March and it has continued to be denied and given, you say, we will give you the money as soon as we sign. And that response to receive most recently was the original agreement from January with no care, care for the negotiations that have taken place with them.
So what other negotiations are we talking about? If the funding has been decided and agreed to, what other conditions? Change, yeah, for change.
That's a great question. We, we sat down and we met in that room next door.
Twice.
Twice. The second meeting, as Councilwoman Stecker said, we had a verbal agreement. That what we had stated was what we're going to work on. We went and got a board approved and a couple of days later, all of a sudden, everything sunk and the thing to get back is the original agreement. And so my frustration, our frustration is that when we as boards meet, we're fine. But somehow when we separate, there is, for some reason, this desire to take us back to square one. And it's not on our path. We have done nothing to present the same consistent agreement every time.
Okay, again, to my point, my request to meet, join at the same time to help mediate this, because the CDB board on May seventeenth was sitting in this chamber and telling us they had not agreed to that document. They had not agreed to the conditions, which was disagreed to by Councilmember Stecker. So.
That's a misrepresentation of the end of our meeting.
So.
Verbal agreement.
Again.
And a board approved.
Again, is there a way to meet to resolve this? We can continue marketing the community.
Derek Group is the one that asked for the attorneys to get involved.
Not what I asked.
My proposal was for the city, which ironically is a chamber.
Then it's not my.
No.
It's not my job to have any more meetings about this, because we sit in the meeting, we make a decision, and then it goes back to square one.
At least your job isn't like the official. Not as the Chamber President.
Or to turn it back just a second. The legal entity that is in CDB now, is it established?
It is established and waiting to find out the form from the IRS.
So the only thing that's stopping them from not completing their duties is money?
Money and funding. So which they would be able to do so, but I was not going to give them the final authorization for the funding until they got that form from the IRS. However, the Instagram, the URLs, the social media, the marketing materials, that stuff is part of this dispute. And also I will point out, the funding that was provided to do these things was provided by the city about.
Sure. What I was asking is, the, the new entity is created, they have the technical stability, the ability to, marketing needs to be done. Chamber could also do marketing that needs to be done with the existing funding. It's there. So I guess I just, I don't know what the impasse is on, on that part. We did fund the CDB in the amount that we had promised to them. They would just be able to be flowing. I know that there's some dispute with laws and things like that, which mentioned materials that exist over in the chamber.
If we were to fund the CDB right now, we would be funding it, and I'm telling you now that the additional costs, they have to recreate everything from scratch, create your own handles.
Sure.
So there was the additional costs and creating everything all over again, which is an option, don't get me wrong. But that's on them, but it's on them and the funding that we provide to do so.
And I think the point to make here is that if they had filed, if they worked correctly, they have a third and fourth quarter funding from the city that we voted on.
Yes, and also from the chamber perspective, if they had done the job they promised to you back in February, we won't be here right now.
If the Chamber has, if the Chamber.
I totally understand why you would. My point is, is that both entities at this point are refusing, are unable to do their jobs, that we need a contract. What is our next step?
Just a little question, comment on Zoom?
Yeah, Linda, can you unmute yourself here?
Got it. I can't see, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I can't see the whole council, but I think it was Mr. Councilman Mormon that brought up, kind of answered my question. I guess, listening to all of this and watching this unfold, I think one thing that hasn't been addressed is the lack of confidence in the chamber that has been established by the community, not only business, but by citizens of this community. Sadly, um, when I had a very short business downstairs or downtown, I tried to talk to people about joining the chamber and it had a bad reputation then. With that being said, I guess I'm confused as to, is there a conflict of interest that Councilman Stecker sits on the city council and the board of the chamber, since it's not an appointed position by the city? The fact that there is somebody from the city council sitting on that, I would think that this would be further along. Now we're six months into the year and the biggest festivities are coming and fundings not being, or fundings being withheld. And I heard Mr. Picklap's reasons. And so I guess I'm really confused as to why this isn't moving forward quickly and that any problems that the chambers had shouldn't be being dumped on the citizens of this community, business or otherwise.
I would like to be clear, I do not want a little funding from, or support from either organization, but at this point, I am out of ideas and options. I mean, economic development perspective, it's an arms race. Marshalltown just literally copied our housing incentive and launched it. Marketing campaign, metro communities are dropping tens of thousands of dollars in tourism to get people to come to their pools and their recreation stuff. Events are being published everywhere. We are far, 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 far behind. It is chilling.
Yeah, whoever's logged in as guest, please identify and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Chris, and I'm listening to all this, and I just need to make the record clear. Holly has accused the fact that, um, that the contract was not signed because it went back to square one. That is not true. The contract that they approached us with is no way near what we had, or what my board had agreed upon in that meeting. And, and that's really unfair for them, for her to tell you guys all that, because we, we approached them with a contract that stated exactly everything that was laid out. And then they all sat in that room together and put together a new contract by their legal counsel. And it is, I, I'm telling you guys, it is nothing. It goes back to saying that we as the CDB have to work under the chamber for two years. It, it's, and I would be glad to send a copy to every single one of you guys, so you guys can see what we sent them versus what they have sent us. And our legal absolutely said, do not, do not sign that, because it's not what, the terms that were agreed, agreed upon. And our legal absolutely said, do not, do not sign that because it's not what, the terms that were agreed, agreed upon. I just had to make the record clear because it, it's been, it's so unfair. And I do apologize. Our attorney did make the effort to file the correct paperwork. He missed a step and therefore some additional paperwork needed sent in after Andrea and I did meet. And I've tried to be very transparent with the entire council and I feel like I've, I really have. I hope you guys know that. We've been very transparent. We are trying to see this through, we want it to get going. We know our attractions, I talk to them every day. They are hurting, they need us to do this work. They need us to get back in business, to start promoting so they don't lose another summer.
So Chris, when you speak of the contract that you wrote stating that it was equal to the negotiations that we had made in March, you included the caboose funds, which we had negotiated out. We had gone from the five years down to the two years. And we were giving you all of the furniture and marketing materials. So please tell me, what of those negotiated points you did not see in our agreement?
Holly, there are a number of things in that agreement that you guys go back to saying, we have to work for twenty hours a week. There are a number of things. And again, I, I, I just think that everybody needs to see it so they can understand that what, what is being told is totally not the truth. Yes, you did, we changed our agreement too, and we sent it on to your legal counsel that stated that we would take out, we wanted the additional money from the caboose. We don't see a reason why the convention and visitor bureau shouldn't get that money. That caboose train.
That's where we got to March.
Okay. Chris, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Now, the irony is not lost to me that we're actually having the exact same thing I requested and listed I. If we want to have this discussion, I am all for having it. But I do not want to take up any more council's time having the discussion right now. What I'm looking for is direction and also for a decision on the twenty first from the council.
I believe our C V B board is more than willing, they've been willing twice to sit down and try to have a mediator work this deal out so we can just get in agreement and move forward. We, we twice have responded to your emails and we appreciate you trying to be able to take care of the situation. And we would be willing to come to the table again at any date and time that you would propose to us.
Can you make that commitment?
No.
But here's what I would say.
Without.
Without word of approval, I can say the opinion is, is that you're going to sort this out through our team, not through a public mediation for the city.
Well, the problem with that is, once the attorneys are involved, the attorneys represent you.
Right.
Right? So they don't care about the other side, they care about you. So all we're going to do is butt heads, this is not going to be resolved. You get a third party in there who has a vested interest in what you guys are doing. And not one way or the other, not for the chamber or for CDB, but for Boom, which is what these organizations are supposed to be about. Then something can get done. But as long as the lawyers are involved, no offense, Jim, but once the lawyers are involved, all they care about is protecting you. They could give a darn less about anything else.
I understand.
That's the truth. And it's all it is, it's costing you money.
Well, yeah, it's costing everybody this.
Right, and it's costing C V B money, it's costing you money, and it's costing us, the city, money.
I understand the worries coming from, but here, here's the way I view this personally. I would highly suggest both parties work real hard in the next two weeks. Because I don't think we may like the outcome of what the vote will be on the twenty first. If nothing's better. That's all I'll say. So I'd say work pretty hard. Get something figured out. We, we've spent way too much time on this discussion already, Mike.
I talked to your board. I mean, we, we did mediations in the past with the ambulance and everything like that.
Correct.
And it wasn't done publicly. Like you said, public mediation, it wasn't in public meetings or anything like that.
Correct.
You know, I think that went pretty well. Just, just kind of put that out there. We all know that this purpose.
I'm all for the mediation and setting you up. I'm just saying that both parties are part concerned that this has to be done by the lawyers. I respect that. I'd say get something done in the next two weeks.
What I, the thing I don't want to see happen is both organizations huddled by access, we don't use it correctly. Fight, and that's their decision. And a curious point about, it's a cyclical thing between reputation, working for the city, the city working for you, building confidence, all of that. I mean, I know that.
In my opinion, if that, if that happens, if that vote happens, it's self-inflicted.
Again, not as a part of negotiations, if this is completely man on the street.
And we're visiting two weeks, but I wanted to put it out there in the air. It wasn't a lot.
Anybody have anything else before we move on? Okay, five department, department reports, police official heads up. What is today, everything? Well. Oh, sorry. Finance officer, Andrea. City Attorney Jim.
Uh, just one thing, today, I have to the court order on the identification of Boom Depot. So when I filed that, the deeds, that, that first resolved. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director of public works, John Ross.
Yes, Your Honor. In your packet, there was a resolution to purchase a street sweeper. That's on our agenda this next year, here, of purchase. We had three minutes. We chose the thirty second option there, the blue room. The reason we're going with that, we did that in August. And the other ones were all until September, November. And it's actually, it's the one they wanted to, it sort of shocks me as well. That is the one they wanted, so I just need to get it approved that. Um, we did have a, we did the budgeting process, we're going to keep the other, uh, street sweeper, have two streets, streets at one time. We don't have a place to store it. We don't really have a staff member to run it, and it gave us thirty thousand dollars to not clean it up. So with that, that's why we sort them a little bit, and that's why the numbers are where they are. Uh, just in here, it's funny you guys, we really don't have a staff to run the sweepers well. And Steve, that's the.
Second.
Call the roll.
Horn?
Yes.
Picklap?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Nicken?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes. Uh, one other thing, the citywide cleanup charge of the day, we started on Twenty Second Street and we're due seven pieces of story pending stuff. Thank you.
City engineer Dan.
Said one thing, we have a street repair project on the A B I S power. Got two bids, the lower was from maintenance concrete, this is a project that we'd like to get done.
So move. Second. All the roll.
Picklap?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Nicken?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
All right. Stop home and save.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, Chief Google. No report, Your Honor. Uh, city administrator, no, I do, sir.
The battery's running low.
Big battery.
So is my computer. No, it doesn't even have that.
Okay, I've been asked by a few about how we're going to pay for all of our projects that we have coming up. And I think you made it very clear to me that there would be no tax increases. So staff got together and we put together a plan I want to go over with you tonight to see, one, to get input from you. And if you want us to proceed. So we start with the first one, that's just, that's maintenance, that's J R's, uh, public works attaching, things like that. We have money for that in Fund Three Thirty One. Second one is the South Marshall Street project. Uh, the total estimated project cost is three hundred and forty thousand. We accounted for that through the fiscal year twenty twenty-two LO S T, or fiscal year twenty twenty-two road use tax ten cents. And Fund Three Thirty One, which that is a fund that when we have money left over for street projects, it goes in there and helps for other projects. So we actually have five hundred thousand funding for South Marshall Street, in case there's overages. Hopefully there's not. If the times get close to the three forty, we'll have one sixty left, which will go, I'm assuming, back in that Three Thirty One account, is that correct?
Over the A B I S.
Where we decide, correct. The next project is the school road. We've had several conversations about that. We think we've come up with a plan to pay that seven hundred fifty, up to seven hundred fifty thousand uh, without any tax increase. And we're kind of combining that with the West Park and South Marion. And I know that was one of your goals this year is to, to pave that, those two roads. This plan is going to delay that. And I think we've talked before because the school bond passed and we agreed to pay up to seven hundred fifty thousand for that road, that that project probably could be delayed. Now, there's one, there's a couple of options we can do. So with the school, we're going to look at that, the twenty one five is that study that we, that council passed and the school's paying half of that. The seven fifty construction cost, uh, we're looking at a bond in fiscal year twenty-two. And that will be part of a bond, the same bond that will pave South Marion and West Park, we'll kind of lumping them together. Now, we could bond for South Marion and West Park this fall for one point five million. But what we also discussed and Andrea come up with for us, if we wait and do that bond in March of twenty-three, we can bond two million ninety thousand, so basically two million. So if you look at the West Park and South Marion on how we're going to fund that, one point five million is the cost we got from Dan. If you remember, you guys approved, uh, taking a hundred thousand from cash from fiscal year twenty at the end of the year to put toward that project. As well, we would use six hundred and seventy-four thousand from that two million dollar bond that we would do in March. We'd start that process in January twenty-three, we get it in March twenty-three. And then the S T P money, which is the money we see from the government through the state, I think we're allowed like two eighty a year or something like that. So if we don't use that and save it up like we did for Eleventh Street, we would have seven hundred, approximately seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for that. So, so you have the hundred thousand, six seventy-four, seven twenty-six gets us to one point five. And then if you look back on the school road, we would use money from that bond as well, the seven fifty uh, to pay the school to set up to seven hundred fifty thousand. So we delays the West Blue project for a year, don't bond in the fall, bond in, I think we're looking at twenty-two? March, or sorry, March of twenty-three, we'd start the project uh, in January. Then we can accomplish not raising any taxes to pay just up to seven hundred fifty thousand to the school. And then we also get our project done, which has been delayed a few times, but get West Park and South Marion. And I will share with you that in the coming weeks, there will be a voluntary.